Yeah.
Barbara, you ready?
Yeah.
Well, do we have to?
We have to approve the December thirteenth, twenty seventeen, and keep it sealed.
Same motion with April twenty-fifth, approve the closed session minutes from April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, keep it sealed. And then the August eighth, two thousand seventeen, approve and release.
Oh, no, I don't.
So.
No, wait, we're not, we're not out, we're not out of closed session yet.
Here we are.
No, nobody.
You have the motion.
Oh.
Make a motion to move out of closed session.
He was just telling us the motions.
Oh, right.
So that's.
So that's why we're out.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, okay.
Make a motion to go into clo- into open session.
Back to open session. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. You didn't hear any of them really.
All right, Robert.
All right.
Okay.
Hit it.
I make a motion to approve December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, Village of Marvin, closed session minutes, but keep them closed. I make a motion to approve the April twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, Village of Marvin, closed session minutes, but keep them sealed. And make a motion to approve the August eighth, two thousand seventeen, Village of Marvin, closed session minutes.
Amber Lee's.
Amber Lee's.
Those are the discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See, I was gonna do that one and refuse myself.
It doesn't say your name.
It doesn't say your name.
Okay. Aye.
Well, just that, um.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
No, it's okay. Not for good.
Forty minutes.
What? We got forty minutes to get this.
All right.
Barbara, you want to?
You're good.
No, you're right.
You can take the slide, not the whole thing, you can take your name.
That's the name.
Yeah.
We're gonna buzz in here, didn't you? Were you listening earlier? I said Chris.
Yeah, we can't afford to. I gotta do this one.
Oh, there's nothing, get back here.
No choice. Which one's this one?
Thank you.
All right, yeah. Thank you. I don't have it because I just literally did this yesterday.
Sorry.
Like, quit throwing stuff at people.
Take care.
Thank you.
I'm gonna worry about me.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Go Christina.
Next up, we have the administration report.
Uh-uh.
I think we're gonna.
We're.
Oh, my gosh. We're still on administrator report?
No, we haven't, no, we're not there yet.
We really love to update you on the bids.
Update on the bids, okay, sorry. Well, this is part of the administration report.
Anybody else see a copy? No, I just put them in the middle.
I see all. Okay, these are the closed minutes, where do they go?
The closed session.
This goes.
So, uh, real quick, pass around the big sheet. And your.
These are too good.
And your new attorney's first project that he's worked on. So, um, there's, there's not a whole lot of reason to really get lost in the weeds with this big sheet that is given to you. We will go over this in detail at the May thirtieth meeting. The only thing that I want you to look at is the very far column that says base bid. And those are the numbers, so you see the differentiation of the different, uh, bidders. And then I want you to see the, yours is not highlighted. Um, but on mine, you have, the lowest bidder is Carmel Contractors. Caramel, nope.
Carmel.
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 Oh, really? I say Carmel all the time.
Yeah, but that's the, well, Carmel is a place in California.
Carmel is.
Carmel is what you put on ice cream. No, caramel, that's what you put on ice cream. This is Carmel. So.
I didn't know that. How are you coming to that?
There's three pronunciations, sorry Christina. In the review of the, uh, bid tabulation sheet that you see here, the contractors, we've looked at all the different supplemental documentation that they were supposed to submit. The caramel, caramel, um, did not sign their instructions to bidders form. When I sat and looked at it, I, I did not feel like it frustrated the intent of, um, the bidding contract law in general. I reached out to the attorney to see if he had that opinion as well. And there is some language inside of your project manual that we created that had some information there where you could waive any type of irregularity that may have encompassed from the bidding tabulation. So, basically, I'm telling you all this to say, if y'all are okay with us moving forward with the base bid of the one point seven, that's who we determined was the lowest responsive bidder. And I'm not asking you to make a reward, an award or anything like that. What I'm asking you to do is just acknowledge that that is the lowest responsive bidder and that the bidding instructions is not a substantial piece of information that we had to have in the bidding process. Do you want to make any comments?
There's also litigation.
The litigation history, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, both of those provisions. And the key is, when you look at the case, all they're, your decision, but it's whether they give you the key aspects of the bid. For instance, if they didn't give price per unit, that would be material because it'd be material to you and then they can come in and undermine the rest of the bidder, so prejudice the other bidders. Here, they have a bunch of documents, they didn't sign one, and they didn't provide one of the documents. And if council wants to move forward, we don't believe there's a legal prohibition with that if you waive, um, informality or irregularities.
And when we say move forward, we're not, we're not talking about dollars or anything right now, we'll get to that in just a second.
You're just saying accepting.
We're just clearly talking about accepting that they are the lowest responsive in general. You don't have to take any action.
Accepting or acknowledging?
Acknowledging, acknowledging is a better term.
So, do we need a motion for that?
No, I can just, you can, I'll just consent that you agree.
You're gonna just consent there?
They are the lowest that I see on this piece of paper.
Okay, so unless there's any objections with that, um, I have a few recommendations I wanted to bring to your attention, and that was based on the information that I passed out or that I emailed to you all yesterday, and I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at it yet. Again, this all came in yesterday, so sorry, it's last minute, we just literally did this.
Do you have chaplain that one? Oh, you do?
Thank you. Got all kinds of chaplains.
So, I'm gonna go through this real fast with you so you can understand it. Basically, the project came in well over what we had anticipated, and I do want to make sure that everyone realizes there's no contingency in the amount that has been requested, and there is also no earmark for audiovisual security or any other furniture needs. So, we do need to take that into consideration when we're talking about total project cost in addition to what the bids came in at. There are a few pots of money that we have that are on the first page. You have all these capital project accounts that are listed here that total one million dollars. Your village hall has eight hundred and sixty, your farmer's market capital has twenty-five, you have this Marvin Loop Extension, and then you have this Greenway Trails Maintenance. They all total one million dollars. Say something wrong, Chris? Okay. So then you have your fund balance reserve accounts, which are land acquisition, which has three sixty, loop and greenway expansion, which has, which has one thirty, basically, and I'm rounding up or down. Capital asset replacement, fifteen, you have some future capital needs at eight, and then you have assigned reserve at twenty. So together, those total one point five. Then your unassigned fund balance and your reserve fund balance, in addition to roads, equals seven sixty-three. So, I'm giving you all this because these are three pots of money that you could pull from if you wanted to pay cash for this project. The way that I would recommend to do this, um, if, if you decide to move forward with it, was to borrow all those, all that money that I've got listed in the capital project account, which is basically trails and greenways. So you would borrow all that money from Parks and Greenways. You would take the fund balance reserves out, which again is, is some related to Parks and Greenways as well, and then you would have to take some from fund balance, which is the very bottom column that you have in your spreadsheet on the back. Anybody stop me, I'll lose you. Where it totals one point five three nine.
Okay, lost me.
Okay, so the very.
Which one on the fund balance? Oh, that one, got it.
That one point five three nine is basically taking all of your capital project ordinances, combining into one for village hall, and taking those reserves and combining it as well. With that said, to get to one point eight, and I'm rounding up because I'm trying to incorporate some AV and some furniture.
Okay, that's.
And it still, it still may need to be more than that.
Okay.
Um, but we need a total of two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars remaining from moving all that money around. If we were to remove two hundred and sixty-one from our unassigned fund balance, that still leaves thirty-one percent fund balance in our accounts. What I would first and foremost do before we did any of this is I would make a recommendation for me to go back to the lowest responsive bidder and try to negotiate with them to bring down the cost just as, you know, here. I don't know what that means. It could mean a hundred thousand dollars, it could mean twenty thousand dollars. That would be the first and foremost step that, that we could do. We do, we do have that ability to do that statutorily with the lowest responsive bidder. So that's option one, to see where it gets us. This is kind of worst-case scenario, but also knowing that we still would potentially need contingency and money for furniture, AV, security, that sort of thing. This is a way we could do it without going to LGC for approval. The second option would be to go to LGC for approval and work through that process. If we do that, it's not a fast process. It would be a very slow process. The state treasurer visited us last week and, and they made recommendation to us, we, we did bring this up just as a possibility, and they said they would wait until we got the budget approved and wait a few months to show that we have some solvency with stability and getting the budgets approved, and, and then they would go for approval, which could take four months, six months.
Actually, they suggested that we wait until after next year's audit is submitted.
That's right, it was the audit, that's right, yes. To show no findings, basically.
Right.
Um, so that would be September, October.
After October thirty-first.
And then the process after that is, is at least three to six months. So, but what we could do, a third option that I don't have here, is we could pay cash, as suggested here with this restructuring of capital, and then go to LGC for approval of funding of some sort, act it fat, and repay ourselves back. So there's a few different options, um, and I'm not asking you to really make a decision tonight, but if you want me to go back to the lowest responsive bidder and just let them know where we're at, then I can do that and we could try to see how much we can negotiate and bring it down, and I can bring back, you know, an official recommendation at the May thirtieth meeting. But I just wanted to let you know.
There's, there's two alternatives, so we haven't decided on. If we want the alternative, go to twenty-five thousand, one thirty-three.
Say that one more time.
If we decided we wanted the alternate one, the White House with the Stone Foundation, that's an additional.
That's correct.
Twenty-five, one thirty-three, if we wanted alternate two, just the old stone, it's an additional ninety-six.
Correct.
On top of one.
Which we know currently, we want all one, so it's actually one, seven, two, five, plus change.
I'm sorry, am I, is, that's actually more?
Yeah, that to that.
Yeah, together.
It shouldn't be, but he did, the other guy did the credit, of course, he was too many. But that doesn't matter, she's asking for direction.
I know, I just, yeah.
So, from a, from a standpoint of budgeting, if everyone wants me to go back to the lowest responsive and just see where we can work things out, I'm more than happy to do so. But this is kind of where we're at in terms of money with what we've got to work with, so.
So then we'd be gutting all those other projects.
Well, the way that I've got the repayment plan structured, which is at the very top, it's not, it's not gonna be a major impact on operations, because what, what I've done is tried to show you how we would repay it back, and since we're only essentially borrowing from greenways, they don't, they have enough money in their fee and lieu, and then I would be using sixteen thousand dollars of your contingency, your fifty thousand dollar contingency to pay for the Amber Meadows and the Telomore in next year's budget. So we would start that repayment process to them next year with twenty thousand dollars. The following year, we basically have a difference in the CIP request, and this is, this is where you saw year one where it said a hundred and eight, six hundred, and then year two would be sixty thousand. There's a difference there. As long as no other projects come on board, there's a difference of forty thousand dollars there. We would go ahead and take that difference, earmark it to them so that we would repay them in the next year, and then they could earmark that for one of their greenway projects. So we would repay them before their projects came on board for their CIP. With the exception of the twenty, twenty-two fiscal year where it says deferred action on amphitheater or farmer's market. Y'all would have to make a decision at that point, one or the other, not both. That is the only impact that it makes to the CIP. And as far as operational impact, there's no true impact operationally because you have twenty thousand dollars that you're appropriating this year for the website that you're not gonna have in subsequent years. So I'm basically taking that money and giving it to them as a repayment over the next four years, three years. And then also the non-recurring traffic control that we would have after the roundabouts Does that make sense?
Yes, everything you're saying makes sense. Did any of these people break down, the bid included all the site work, right?
Yes.
Did any of them break down that site work separately?
They did not, they gave some total. And that would be my first thing, of going to the lowest bidder and asking him, because his, his site work was, don't quote me on this, I think eight sixty-seven, is seeing if we could pull some of that out. I mean, if there's, if there's a good chance we can pull away from some of the site work, that's a good chunk of the, the budget.
I was saying, so he did separate it out?
He did not say what exactly it was, he just gave a lump sum.
She's saying that she's hoping she can go to him and he might break it down.
Did he give a lump sum for the site work?
Yes.
Eight sixty-seven?
Yes.
So when I told you guys that this thing can be built for under one point five, it can. I don't know why the site work is almost nine hundred thousand dollars.
Can you tell me, go get them?
Yeah.
You follow me, so he's?
Right, but there's three that are in the same or higher.
And that, we looked at all the site work, because we were trying to find outliers too, and they were all right there, about the same.
So they all did break out the site work?
They just gave a lump sum, they didn't say what the site, the site work was for.
Chaplain, we're allowed to talk about any of this, aren't we?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, they broke out site work from house.
Yes.
I'm calling it a house, the village hall.
Yes, yes.
Okay, the lowest bidder, the site work, was seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, out of his total of a million, seven oh two.
So the house, the village hall was a million, the dirt was the rest, seven hundred and change?
It appears so.
Site work includes parking lot, the facilities, construction, sidewalk.
What were the, can you give us the other site works? Because I remember eight sixty-seven in my head.
Utilities, yeah, it's not just grade.
And, and where I'm headed with it, guys, is we tried talking to ESP about minimizing the site work, because you've seen the lot, it, it goes down from the road, down over towards the, um, the lowest part. The detention ponds are where the dirt gets built back up. So, one, before you went back to them, if we could talk to ESP again, I'm feeling like they might have been conservative on what they went back to Deener with, because having two detention ponds for one building. Think about it, none of your houses have detention ponds, I mean, nothing around here that's outside of subdivision has detention ponds, but we're building one structure and it has two.
And that's something that we talked about in that meeting, because we were trying to do, and that, that's something we all felt, felt was reasonable.
Because of the parking.
But, if we're, technically, what we were talking about before, if we're not sure about this farmer's market yet and/or the cover, then why do we need to build all that impervious surface in addition?
So she and I talked to ESP that one time, and here's, here's all of it, and I'm gonna pause, but let me finish completely, because I will, I'm just getting old in my pause. The, there were, there were a couple things. One was, of course, the impervious, which we said, all right, show it as a proposed structure. He said that they wouldn't ding us if we showed it as proposed, but it's possible they did. Two was the impervious pavers. You know, we were supposedly using pervious pavers.
Mm-hmm, I think some of it was pervious.
To mitigate some of that. So now, we're not counting a structure, farmer's market, we're not counting the pavers, all we have, we're back to having a house. So there's that. The, the third part of it, and I don't, I don't think you reached the comfort level with it that, that you could, is we're not clearing more than an acre. The Deener permit doesn't even kick in. But when you ask a civil engineer to put his stamp on something, he's gonna err on the side of caution. Well, if you're not clearing an acre, a Deener permit does not kick in, in the first place. So certainly, we have a responsibility to, you know, good land stewardship, and we want to mitigate any erosion, but we're not required to by state law if we don't clear more than an acre. Now, when I said that to him, he said, well, I don't know if they'll count the part that's already cleared. No. We're all pretty smart people. If it's already cleared, who in their right mind would count it against you? Okay, can we all agree on that? It's clear, there's no clearing to be done, you don't count that in the acre. If the math is based on just the footprint, it's a five thousand square foot structure, twenty-five hundred square foot footprint. An acre is what, forty, three thousand?
That's right.
Square feet. All right, so the math is still on our side. So there's work that can be done, that's why I want to know about the site work. We can get this back down, in my opinion, closer between one point three and one point five, if we address the site work, and I'm happy to help with that. And then, I don't know if there's any urgency to get back to a bidder sooner than later. Can you just tell them, hey, look, we're gonna try and approach this site work at a different angle?
There's usually a, um, time period for which their bids are good.
One twenty, one twenty days.
Oh, it was like sixty.
One twenty, did you say?
Depends on the, um, the bid language, because they have to get subs embedded out, so you have a, but you have a lot of time on this one, which is good.
If we, if we take over the site work portion of it, is the bid still even any good? Because they included that in their bid.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying we take it over, I'm saying we're, we're trying to streamline.
From a legal standpoint, because the other bidders will bid on.
On the same thing, you can massage it some, but at some point in time, if you change the project so materially, you need to rebid.
Which I would be open to rebidding if it saved the village two hundred thousand dollars.
I think in a nutshell, um, what he is saying is, would y'all like for us to go back to ESP and maybe look at revising the plans, the, the civil plans to change the site work, to maybe reduce some of the impervious area so that the site work is not so large where it requires two B and P bonds?
Would that require that we open it up to the other, the other company to rebid?
Say that again.
Wouldn't that open it up to, have to be rebid again to the other two companies?
Depends on how much it changes, I would think, right?
That's what I was gonna have.
And I'd have to look at the bid documents and the package, but that's something. You can make some changes, but if you sent up for a bid and the project changes so materially, then everybody didn't have the equal opportunity to bid on it. And then you've gotta start over, but we'll, we'll just have to look and see.
That's my only concern.
When you're saying, to even go further back, just to confirm, the idea of sort of negotiating a price, that's perfectly fine?
Yes, the statutes are clear on that one.
Okay.
With a little bit of.
But we can't go back to them and say, hey, we're gonna work on the site work, can we renegotiate because we didn't give the other, the other bidders equal opportunity? Is that what I'm hearing?
It comes to materiality, that provision of, like, right now, like, the site work and it's seven hundred thousand out of one point seven, it's half the cost. And if you take all of that out, that is certainly more than material, because it's half the project. Uh, if you take a smaller amount, we may be okay. And I also need to look at the bid documents.
Yeah, and he hasn't had time.
In fairness, because I haven't done that, uh, these are bid different ways, and some of them have different provisions where they say, uh, the village reserves a right to modify different terms, and if we have some of that language, we're gonna be more protected. And I have to not look at the bid package. It was sent to me today.
We have a pretty healthy project manual that coincides with this, that, that we created internally, um, and he hasn't had time to look at it. So once he gets, you know, through all that, and maybe you can tell us, but in the meantime, maybe we can go to the lowest responsive bidder and, and.
What were the, what were the structure numbers per bidder?
And it's broken down, it's not just like structures, it's like eighteen categories.
Is the site work separated?
Site work is separate, what I was gonna say is, interestingly, on the other two bids, they were within twelve hundred dollars of each other on site work.
Wow.
And they were a hundred and ten thousand dollars higher than the lowest bidder.
That, yeah, they were all about the same.
So the site work. How did that work? So, yeah, so the site work made up a hundred and ten thousand dollars of the difference. And, um, like, like, then there's number, division one was called general requirements, which I don't know what that includes.
That's division one in the, in the bid.
In the bid thing, yeah.
It's, it's probably the permit fees and all that stuff, I would.
Really? Because the lowest bidder's number was one seventy-eight, the next lowest was two ninety-four, and the next one was four sixty-one. So there was quite a bit of difference in those, in that category. Now, just scanning these other categories, they all look like they're really similar. And there's categories like concrete, masonry, metals, like all these different.
And we'll have, we'll have all that detail at the May thirtieth meeting, I mean, we, we can go through those, that detail, but the site work was the majority of it, and it was all pretty much uniform.
Well, I was gonna ask, I mean, can we, we can look at these bids, right? Okay.
But I, can I assume that none of us are interested in spending almost two million dollars? Because I'm not.
Lot of chance.
So, with that in mind, you know, I've kept an arm's distance because of, you know, a turn political during the election that I wanted a town hall built, because I wanted to build it. But I am willing to go to work on this site work, because that's an enormous amount for moving a little bit of dirt, eight hundred grand across the board. If that's what you're saying, Chris, that are all between eight hundred and nine hundred? Just for the site work?
Yeah, the highest one is, um, eight ninety, um, six.
But what I would recommend, if it's legal, is, so we tried ESP, and they basically didn't want to change their work. If council, I could give a number, but if council are willing to let me take the site work plan to someone else to see what they say about the impervious, that's really the big question, because if the impervious is less, or the clearing is less, either one, then the, the detention ponds and the buildup becomes unnecessary.
Is, is, I don't know, but is the parking lot considered the impervious too?
No, the parking lot is pervious because we're using pervious pavers.
Oh, we're using pavers for the parking lot?
Pervious pavers.
Pervious pavers.
Yeah, remember, we gave, oh, you weren't around, we gave an extra thirty grand.
I remember the minutes I was in here.
Robin had it quoted at thirty grand more, uh, to cut down the impervious by going to pervious pavers. So there's a cost related to it, but the idea was the thirty grand.
It would offset the site work cost.
Well, that was the hope, but I think during those discussion, it was also the, well, everything we're talking about is stormwater. The other thought was, put a green foot forward. Let's, let's do the right thing, do pervious pavers, that's why we were willing to spend an extra thirty grand. But I feel like the calculations aren't being done right, and I'm, you know, I'm not the engineer, but you've got a house, and you've got pervious pavers, and you're taking out the farmer's market, and you need that much stormwater detention, which isn't even required if we don't clear more than an acre. So, I feel like work, money can be saved with a little bit of work, which I'm willing to do, but it could be that I'd have to ask Christina, if I found someone who's willing But it could be that I'd have to ask Christina, if I found someone who was willing to look at it, it could cost, I don't know, a few hundred bucks, I don't know.
She's gonna just rush her fund.
Apparently, yeah.
Problem is, if we go back to reconfiguring that, that's such a material thing that it's...
It'd have to go back out to bid.
Yeah.
Which I don't see as a problem.
My guess is the acreage may be with development as opposed to clearing. Because you're gonna be developing, it's already cleared.
Land movement.
But I think it's anything, I think it's development, and I think that's why it's triggering the higher amount. And I'm not the engineer either with that, but I'm wondering...
No, you're right, but the parking lot, we even said, when we talked about that, the parking lot's 30, it's around 30 cars. And I think the square footage on it, at most, was 20,000 square feet. And then you got a, let's call it a 3,000 square foot footprint. Some of the original figures was based on the runoff from the road. Somehow that impacted it. But when DOT built the roundabouts, they addressed all that separately. So we're not even phasing, DOT did it already, they recut all the ditch lines. We also have sidewalk drawing along the road, but we're not gonna put sidewalk there, we're doing the Innisbrook Trail. So it's shown on the site plan as sidewalk up against the road. I don't know if you can see it, that's drawing. See all this along the road?
I thought we were doing both.
We're going behind the road for Innisbrook, we don't have to do any of this.
I don't know, I feel like that might be on PRG's, like, way out plans to go in front. So, which is fine, they can do that way out, like that's...
Way out, and it can come off the plan. And this is where the money would be, let's say a different engineer says, "Oh, yeah, we could, we can get you down to one detention pond, or no detention ponds, no stormwater." Then, you know, that may be a big part of the equation. If you look at the house footprint right here, and this, we did these, all of this because of the farmer's market. So if we're phasing that out, that goes away. All of this may be counted against us as far as development, but not impervious, because we were gonna do pervious pavers.
We can always add that later, right?
Roll on things on what went out to bid?
Yeah.
We would have to rebid.
That's a major.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things, we would have to rebid.
Yeah, we would have to rebid.
But at 1.8, if it was my personal money, I'd be rebidding.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just saying, if it just pushes out another, whatever.
Yeah, but I'm...
How much, you...
Sorry.
In the background, you're projecting, we're gonna save $200,000, so 200 off of 1.7 is 1.5.
I would hope to get it to 1.5.
So 1.5, when the budget was what, 8, 900,000?
It was a million.
Yeah, so we're 600,000 above, we still have a bogey over here that we don't know about, with the roundabout. And it sounds like we're borrowing from Peter to pay Paul here to do that, so I'm just a little apprehensive of... I mean, I have no problem saying to the bidder, yeah, acknowledging that they were the lowest bidder. How we get to, from 1.7 down to 1... And even if we did get to 1.5, I'd sure want to hear from the community in the survey we're gonna have, what's more important? The trails, you know, those type of things, I think we still need to build this, but it's like, there's something to be said, we're also in a very unique time where you can't even get a plumber to show up at your house, so building is, maybe they are fluffing it a little bit because of the economy and how everybody's busy anyway. They throw numbers out there, and maybe it is a little fluffing, if they can get it, but maybe it's an opportunity to say, hey, let's put the brakes a little bit, because it's, I think, well, Stallings just...
Stallings?
Stallings just went through theirs, and they, theirs were, the same thing, was $2 million, which was 400 bucks a square foot. This 1.7 is 300 bucks a square foot. You know, I mean, I guess, like, the question would be, what do you guys feel comfortable going forward with, from a budget standpoint? Let's say we can get it to 1.5, are you guys comfortable going from what was initially 850, if I remember correctly? Then we bumped it up a little bit, Chris, is that right?
964 was the last number.
964 was the last number, and now we're at 1.5. So that's what...
Cool, technically, we're at 1.7.
But we're saying, if we can get it down to 1.5, is that even acceptable?
Can I go back one, I know, and not, I don't want to stop what you're saying, but I almost feel like I want to even move backwards a little more from that point. I guess what I'm trying to, just I'll make one quick one, then a longer question. The first question is, does this, I think, I mean, the numbers are only gonna go up, right? In terms of building a village hall, I would guess, that, you know, had this been built maybe even two years ago, we might have been dealing with a whole other set of numbers, that's what I'm thinking, so that's one thing.
No, you're dead on, I get letters every quarter, concrete's gone up, steel's gone up, it just keeps going up.
It just keeps going, and so, with that in mind, and I'm not proponent or one or the other, I just really think we need to go way backward and say, how important is it for the village of Marvin to have a village hall? If we're saying that at some point we want this village to actually have one, then we have to come up with more than just, do we bid, do we not bid, do we... If we want a village hall, is now the right time to do it, because we don't want it to go up higher? Or, or is, or is, just that? Does the village council, sitting here, want a village hall at any point for this village? Because it feels like we've now gone 20 years, right, almost 94, more than that? And we don't have, we don't have a village hall. And it feels like we're bursting at the seams here. So I guess, I, I'm really frustrated, I'm sure like all of you, I was stunned, I was trying to focus on my work in Boeing Rock last night, and when I got the news, I was like, oh, I could barely focus when I got these numbers. But I want us to just go, let's go back to the beginning, if you don't mind, and can we just, like, how important is this to us?
It's kind of, same question worded differently, I think that's what Joe was asking, is it worth 1.5? If we could get it to 1.5?
I don't even know if I want to talk about money as much, that's where it differs, like, I'm not trying, I'm trying not to attach it to anything.
You want to go down to actual, what is the question, so?
Do we deserve a town hall, yes or no, that's what she's asking.
I mean, I think all towns should have a place to call home, for sure, and stuff, when do you build it? Yeah, there are good times to build, in the sense that they're favor the builder, or the person who is paying for it, and there are bad times. And, I mean, right now, I would say, in general, we have a pretty thriving economy, where it's, you know, prices are up, and then, with what's going on nationally, it's only gonna get worse for, in the short time, but... But again, I remembered your comment too, about safety first. And if, I think the question should be asked, Mary, in all fairness, is not what we want, is that's this community what they want. If we're gonna spend that kind of money, would they rather see it in a, money that put towards a roundabout, or to make more things accessible through greenways and stuff like that? Or would they rather see a home for council, you know, and I guess that's the question. And I don't know what the constituents would say, I could maybe guess some of the ones that I know, but I mean, but we're also, we're trying to be always good stewards of the money and stuff, and we were projecting 965, and now it's 1.5, and it's like, well...
And then, in all fairness, to...
Can I raise my hand?
Yeah, yeah, but he was talking to me, I'd like to be able to finish my point. As much as it's often a trade-off, I, that's why I'm, I'm not sure if you... The reason I would want to detach away from whether it's a trade-off conversation, or a money conversation, I'm not saying never consider those things. I'm just at this point where I feel like, one, you all were elected, and Ron Salomeo was elected, to make decisions, town hall was part of that discussion. I don't know that we are, I'm trying not to get, to do that, do, have a conversation in that way. I'm just saying, does the community, if you prefer, deserve a town hall? And so, I'm not saying we are doing it, not doing it, I just feel at this point, we need to understand why it is we were doing this in the first place, and it's not just a building and an expenditure. We don't have a place marker for this village anywhere. And so that's what I'm asking us to think about. Then we'll talk about whether it's worth the money, whether it's not. I just don't even know whether everybody collectively feels the same way about putting that landmark down, that's all.
I mean, just, you brought his name up, but I mean, just, my opinion was, if Ron threw a million and a half, he'd take away. He was never, you know, his thing was, we're never gonna spend a million dollars on a town hall. So, I mean, that was just as...
What do you say?
Never spend a million, because a million was...
He was basically, on top of the thing, he was never going, how are you gonna explain to anybody, we're spending a million dollars for a town hall?
He isn't living anymore, though.
I know, but I'm just saying...
Yeah.
I was just saying, well, we did, uh...
That's...
I mean, I, again, you know, I think we, I've always been in favor of a town hall, like I said, it was, first meeting, I was, you know, on council 12 years ago, and we were talking about a town hall, and getting, finding a town hall, finding a place for, you know, building, whatever. But, I mean, a million, a million five, and as you said, that's not including any of the furnishings, audiovisual stuff. I don't know what the estimate is for that, we don't have that budget anywhere else, you were saying. So we're probably talking at least another 100,000, or whatever.
Probably Stalin, Stallings, was it 2 million when they did their bid and stuff?
No, O'Brien, O'Brien, we talked about audiovisuals, he was throwing around about 150,000, you know, at least, you know.
I just wanted, if you're ready, I just wanted to comment on something.
Yeah, absolutely.
I liked it a moment ago, when you said, the question is where we're willing to spend 1.5, no politics involved, fair question. But then you followed it up with a statement about safety, and you, you didn't say it out loud, but you pointed towards the roundabout.
Right.
I agree, if we had to trade off the roundabout for a village hall, I'd pick the roundabout. But that's a state-maintained road that they're supposed to pay for. We did put our money where our mouth is by cutting a check to DOT for $220,000 a year ago.
Based on the price.
So we did, you know, Waxahaw didn't, all the other towns served by this cut through didn't, we did. We put down 220 grand.
Actually, more, or more. We had another 500,000 over here, so...
So we said out loud, safety is important to us, and we don't want to see any kids get hurt. So if I had to choose, I would choose the roundabout, but I liked, again, going back, I liked it when there were no politics. And you said, "Hey, council, would you spend 1.5?" Then you followed it up with residents seeing us choose between a village hall and a roundabout, and that, we don't have to make that choice. She showed us in the, in the budget, she's, we've got DOT, we don't expect to be on the hook for their overruns, so let's take the politics out of it. Had, if I had to choose, yeah, I'd pick the roundabout, but we don't have to. And then you've also said you think people would rather have the greenways than a village hall. That one, I don't know what kind of response you give, but she showed us how we would repay the greenways in what?
Three years. Three years.
Three years. Does, does that eliminate, did that eliminate the Innisbrook Trail, which is...
No.
So it didn't eliminate the greenway we have planned, it eliminated greenways that have not even been proposed yet, am I right?
It hasn't eliminated anything.
So it hasn't, it hasn't eliminated anything. So that's what I mean by politics. The reality is, she figured out the numbers, it couldn't be done. The question remains, is, do we really want one? Mary's question.
Yes.
Nick's question, should we ever even consider going over a million? And then your question, would we spend 1.5? I personally wouldn't spend the 1.7 if I was a council one. Get me closer to 1.5, I think about it, but first I need to know I could get there, right? I mean, it's not even a conversation, Adam, we can't get there. And I think it's all in the site work, and that's why I proposed what I proposed. But if tonight everyone's saying, we don't even want to go over a million, it's not gonna be built for a million this, in 2019, that I, I think we can all agree on, we're not gonna get it for a million bucks. If I were building it myself, I think the lowest I could get it, if I were doing a town a favor, would be like 1.3. I think that'd be absolute lowest, I don't think we'll get any to under 1.3.
What is that, square foot?
Well, just...
Just out of curiosity.
The square foot's hard, because...
236.
236.
236 is what the architect told us, but, you know, if you scale back to site plan, the square footage number gets skewed in the favor of, it looks better, but the reality is you're getting less, so when I, when I quote people building something, I do it on the actual structure, and then separate out the site work, that's just how my head works.
Which, which goes back to...
Because if someone wants to compare apples to apples, pretend the house is helicoptered in and dropped, never mind the dirt, because everyone buys a different lot, not everyone can buy the same lot.
Once a lot is bought, then you build on it, and it's really the, that's what you're paying for, because you've already paid for the lot and stuff, and that's separated, and it's probably already prepared, too.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just got two questions. If there's a way we could go back to the lowest responsive bidder at 1.5, just, we figure it out, do you think that's a material change?
They're getting them to do it.
Well, I mean, just from the numbers, 1.7 to 1.5. Would it be, would it require us to go to rebid?
How do you get them there?
I don't know.
That's the question, is how much is cut out? If you're getting them to cut back on some of their costs, some of their profit, then that's a no-brainer, because that's clearly allowed by statute. I think you could probably do the 1.5, of course, we're above, because we're at 1.7, well, plus 25, I guess, okay?
So what if, and I'm just throwing this out, what if you and I could sit down with Carmel? And look at it, and talk with him, and say, can we eliminate this, switch this around, this is our budget, we need to stick to it? We bring the 1.5 back, y'all can have that conversation May 30th, and figure it out from there if you truly want it, the 1.5, or roughly therein.
But here's, and I don't disagree with you, but he's saying if we change it materially, in a material way, then we're not given equal opportunity to all the bidders, so if the negotiation to get the price down is strictly overhead of profit, that's okay.
And I think that conversation is, hey, our budget was 985, we want to do this with you, you're the lowest bidder. Can you work with us to get, that's the only way you're gonna be able to do that.
You're raising a great point, if it's all, if it's all site plan, then it's starting to get, but if we can get a combination of the two...
Yeah, I mean...
But let me take a question a little further, instead of going out to rebid, and I'm not afraid of rebidding, what does that cost us?
It's not, it's not much.
It's nothing. I'm not afraid of rebidding, but if you're gonna change the site plan, is it legal, just to go back? Are these the only three people that did?
Yes.
Can you go back to just the three on the list and say, "We're changing the site plan in a material way, would you like to rebid?" Or do you have to go back out for a full bid?
You have to go back to rebid.
What if you just negotiate with all three?
You can, you can.
You negotiate with the lowest responsive bidder.
Okay, that's where I needed to catch up.
That's great questions.
So, and I'm, I'm just throwing this out here, it, we're talking 10 to 15% of total contract award. In, in, in the grand scheme of things, 1.7 million, $200,000 is 10 to 15%. If we could figure out a place to, if we could figure out, you know, $5,000 here, $25,000 here, I mean...
If we can do it some out of profit, and not everything out of just a huge...
One piece of it.
That you're bidding on something a lot smaller. And especially, and I didn't look at the others, I think their grading was actually higher, but, which means, if you take it all out of grading, if you look at their perspective, well, we were a lot closer on the building.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah.
Just, I think a challenge is unlikely with those numbers, but we're a litigious society. The thing is, if you, a lot of these builders are busy, so they're probably gonna move on. I think if we can do it out of a combination, we're gonna be okay, but if everything's coming out of the grading, then that's pretty big, and then you look at these other two that are close.
So why don't, why don't, why don't we sit down and look at it and see, because it doesn't, the site, it doesn't say site work, grading, flowers, you know, it doesn't say exactly what it is, it's just one lump sum.
But before we do all that, let's talk about everyone's upper limit. I mean, I ideally don't want to spend even 1.5. I feel like my upper limit's 1.3, in today's dollars, we're not, we're not 2016 anymore. Does anyone else want to throw out numbers? Do you have any?
Surely 1.3 sounds a lot better.
But it's better than what we saw, but what if, you know, if it was coming out of your pocket?
Yeah, I'm saying... I mean, I, I think I could probably go, well, 1.3, but 1.3 would be everything, it would be furnishings, the electronics, the audiovisual, whatever we were gonna do inside, I mean...
So really, you're 1.2, when we say 100 less?
I mean, it probably about 100.
I'm saying, I'm looking at 1.3 as a total, out the door, of course.
I was 1.3 plus whatever stuff, so I guess I was 1.4.
I'm saying 1.2.
Because Joe asked the fairest question, will we spend 1.5? What's the point of going back and talking to him if they wouldn't spend 1.5, anyway? So where are you guys at? Where are you at?
I mean, you know, I go back to what we kind of had budgeted, which was right around a million. I think I could have gotten to like, if the bids came back at 1.2, was I think was my, like, upper number. I mean, I wouldn't have, I would have preferred lower, but I think 1.2 is my all-in, done. I mean, I wouldn't have, I would have preferred lower, but I think one point two is my all in, done.
All in, like Nick?
Furniture, AV, whatever, that's all in.
I know Nick.
I was, I was saying one point three.
You were one point three in, you were one, two in.
All in, yeah.
Mary?
I'm not, I can't answer because I have a totally different way of thinking about it right now.
That's okay.
Maybe Joe can go ahead and answer.
Well, you don't have to give an answer, I know you wanted to just consider, do we, are we ready, do we deserve it? Do we, do the residents want it, do they deserve it?
I, I think if it was my money, I, I completely, I'm completely off the charts when people look at it. I, if I don't have the money to pay for it, I'm not buying it. That's how I've lived my life the last, let's see, probably twenty-five years. And once I got out of debt, I just would not refuse to take any debt on. And if you have a budget, it's like, there's a saying out there, when your outgo exceeds your income, your upkeep's your downfall. You can't spend more than you make, but it's not that we can't make it because with government you tend to, the well is endless and you just can, can tap into the well, so.
I, I understand that on a personal level, but she showed us, we actually have the money to pay cash, is the word she used.
Right. But it's, yeah, I know, it's, it's right, but then it takes around the other, it's moving around all the other different things.
Projects that don't actually exist, this one does, so. If you have a number.
Right, I mean, the, the number wasn't going to be, that's why I said when they, when they thought that they could build it for under a million, I, I laughed at it. Because I said, there's just no way you're doing that, you're building it. And yes, I'm considering site costs and all that kind of stuff. Now, there's, there's, it's idea stuff, but there's what other ways of, of, of looking at this? If you want, if you truly want a village hall and, and get away from the building. We've already protected that corner, we're never going to build on it. And I, I chatted with this about, to Christina a little bit, and, and ideas are free, so don't, don't get upset with this, this idea, but.
I won't if someone passes me in water because I'm hurt.
Okay, but, I mean, there's, so I don't like, let's make it clear, I don't like spending the one point five. But again, there is opportunities to take exactly right here what we have and do a long-term lease and you remodel this. We have no site cost and we're actually remodeling this space and you do a long-term lease with this. Land use doesn't change, they own the property for, it's a ninety-nine year lease, they own the property, land use doesn't change, you make, we, we, we're making the improvements on the building. Building stays here. So there's opportunities and my understanding is, they, they would at least take that back to the elders and I'm, I'm just, that's what I've heard, but whether it would happen or. Now that's pie in the sky, taking a thing, you know, just, and, and then we're, we're, we're nowhere near the one point three because of the site cost alone. Now you're just taking an existing building and improving it. And long-term leases are done all the time. I mean, I don't understand them that well, because when I looked at, where I got involved, when I was looking out of the country buying stuff. Certain countries would not allow US residents to actually purchase, you had to do long-term leases. And at the end of the day, the ninety-nine years would all be gone and it's, the negoti, there's a negotiating process and, you know. Maybe we can get someone to fill us in on how that works and stuff, but that's just an idea. Where we're not spending that kind of money and we still get what we need. Yes, we would be probably having ourselves moved somewhere temporarily while this was being renovated. But, but if you think about it for them, it, it actually accentuates, we create what we run, want right here. It, it would probably help with their congregation in the sense that they would have parking spaces available and they could grow their congregation. Because we don't use this on the weekends, ever, we don't use this building. We're getting a prettier building right next to a beautiful church. We do what we want, but if you, you take it from this standpoint of remodeling, I mean, they did it, it's hard, and he didn't remodel, which I think is crazy. He just knocked the building down and then started all over again, and that's the first one we've ever even done. What I'm saying here is, and I don't even know if it can be done, it's just, again, an idea in the sky, but it's certainly nowhere near the one point five. And you've got all this land here, it's an option, take it to them, whether it, it flies or not, I don't know if it does. I, I don't understand the long-term leasing part of it, but I know it exists.
It does, the ground lease.
It's a ground lease and, and, and they benefit in, in number of ways because the land use doesn't change for them. It stays a town hall and they're fine with, you know, and we continue, I guess, the rent from it. We're just, we're making all the improvements on it and it's a ninety-nine year lease.
And you could do a joint use with the parking lot or something like that.
Right, right, right.
So will you concede that I was the first person to bring that idea to you several years ago?
I don't remember that, but if you did, I'll take your word for it.
I was, and I had all the, and you know, and I've said it from the beginning, this spot would have been the ideal place for a town hall.
I've always said that.
It's between the two churches and when you start talking about combining all the, all of the, the, the walkways, the pathways. When we, you know, when, to me, it felt like I was the one who had mentioned to you, look, it's what, when you asked, hey, when you got the council to talk about it, I said, yeah. I called Ron Salomeo because he was the one who was objecting at the time and I said, yeah, I'll talk to him. And I do think that you can talk the church into it, because they have been the ones that have been objecting up until now. I said, but if you let them know, look, at least you're still getting an office use, you're not getting another higher impact use. You might be able to convince the churches that this is an alternative. The reason I talked to you about those ideas, I've managed to convince Ron Salomeo to at least. And I think with talking to Nick to put it off for three months, so that they could explore it, so that you could talk to the church elders. This was two years ago, was because I was truly thinking that that might be an alternative, which is fine. But when we went down that path, it felt as if, for whatever reason, all those alternatives weren't explored. And so that's why I feel like I'm going back to my original question and not talking about budget. Because, call me pie in the sky, but after I've been here for twenty, thirteen years, fourteen years. It, and I know that since nineteen ninety-four, it's been a goal of this village to build a village hall. Because a village hall is not just about an expenditure, it's about having a home and a place and a mark on the Google map that says, yeah, that's town hall. And I'm not saying I'm willing, you know, we have to be willing to spend everything, but we have to have a plan to put something somewhere. And it feels like that was the plan, that's what council established. And I forever said, all right, well, let's just get the bids so we know if it's even possible. And it's taken two, three years just to get to the bidding point. Now we're at the bidding point and I'm saying, if we deserve a village hall, call me impractical. But we have to have a plan to put one in place. And I don't know what that plan is, but the way this has happened is not, not, doesn't seem to me to have been focused on creating a place for the village. That's why I'm asking that. I know, and it's a very different way of approaching it, but it seems to me very difficult to call yourself a town after so long and not have a town hall at the very least. So that's, that's just, for what it's worth, I don't know what, how you move forward from here, but we have to decide what the direction is and move. Whether it's this council or the next council. Because it's gotten way, it's gotten, it's gotten way too long.
Is it Tommy Tucker that calls us the favorite town?
Well, because we don't have any services, we have roads now, we're in the road business.
Nick, you're part of the, you've been around one way or another for, what, twelve years?
Yeah, well, like I said, we do, we, we looked at, I don't know how many, I mean, buildings, how many sites for a town hall already twelve years. And, you know, it's been, like I said, it was the first meeting I was at, we, we talked about we needed a town hall. Again, I'm not. I'd like to leave the money out, but I can't really leave the money out, I mean, it's, it's much more on what I think we ought to spend or what we should spend. So I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm, I could go with one point three, you know, all in, you know, I mean. I guess, again, I know it's, we've been talking about it for two years, but.
Oh, ten.
Well, we've talked about twelve.
Twelve, actually, yeah, since you guys.
We've been talking about this, this town hall for two years and, yeah, we originally it was nine hundred and something, yeah, I guess present and wide up over two years. But again, you know, I, I, not five hundred thousand difference, I mean, that's.
Well, I'll circle it back to what Christina said.
I've been an advocate of the town hall, but I'm, I'm not five hundred thousand dollars up.
Well, I'll circle back to what I think though, is what at least I see Christina's doing, and which I really wholly admire. Is that what she's saying the whole time is she's problem solving through it. And that's something I haven't seen for a while, in the sense that if this is a goal, we can find a way to do it. But you have to be willing to let, you know, to, to talk about and think out different solutions. So if she's saying, look, there's a couple of options here on the table, let's, you know, exercise them out. I think that's great, but why have, it feels like in the past we've put a cap on it in terms of money. And before the exercise of exploration and fact finding has begun. And I feel like, why are we going to do that again? Why not just do the fact finding first and then find out what the reasonable range of an amount is? Because of this idea that we just throw a mu, a, a number out and go, well, if, you know, if you can get it all, we're going to get it done by this amount and that's it. Honestly, you know, it never, it never works out well. None of us are builders, engineers, except for maybe Robert, sorry. You know, but, and, and that's why we should have really turned him over, turned it over probably to him in the first place.
Well, I mean, when, when I do a project at my house, and this is a much smaller scale, but I have a budget. Like, I know what I want to spend and if it goes over that, then it's, okay, well, how much over and is it really worth that? And can we afford to do it? Yes, I understand that the money's there and we can move a bunch of stuff around and we can do all that. But that's not the numbers that we had talked about and that's, these numbers are, I think, astronomically way higher than I could ever get comfortable with. So it's, so, so in terms of, you know, we'll, you know, find out what the numbers are first and then make the decision. I look at it different as, you know, and we've all said it, we have to be good steward of the people's money and I agree with that, we do. So we had a budget in mind, we had a number in mind and this is significantly higher than, than what we all talked about. And, and I can't get behind these numbers. Now, I'm fine if, you know, and I.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, we're going to end the meeting here shortly.
Um, I appreciate you working out and figuring out how to make this work, I think that's great and really good. And I'm fine if you want to go back and talk to people and try to get the numbers down, I'm fine with that. But these numbers, I can't. I mean, you know what my number is now, if, you know, we work and finagle some other things, then, you know, maybe I can get behind some other numbers, but this is, this is.
And that said, while you, if the council wants you to kind of explore, if there's a way to cut that significantly.
I'm fine with that.
It's going to have to go back out to bid, I think, to, to, to just be fair and then just throw it all out again.
And I'm fine if you, can you do it at the same time? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hold on.
It's okay.
Can you do it at the same time? Can you work on site stuff and can you go back to the lowest responsive bidder? And kind of, and not together, but just do it simultaneously? Okay.
There's nothing to say, look, and, and Christina, I think the way you approach it is, look, which council's struggling with, their budget was nine sixty-five, so you're twice what it was. So we're working on, and, and this may end up, and, and this is maybe how you sell it, you know, they're listening to me. But, but the way is, the sell it is, is like, look, if, if you can't work with me on this price, then it is going back to, to them. Because we're working on trying to cut other costs out and figuring out on the site. Now, my other question would be, as you're doing that, then authorize one of us, maybe with staff, to reach out to them and see. What does nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in a remodel get you? Meaning you have existing land right here, existing property and what does nine, nine hundred and sixty-five, so you're not, and it's a lease. So you got to get your head wrapped around to that, but you're still renting.
No, you could build something for that, you wouldn't have to remodel it.
Well, I know you could build something, you could knock it down and build it and stuff like that.
You could build brand new.
And, I agree, I agree.
This is a flat lot that wouldn't, wouldn't have to endure.
We're, we're not, our, our town doesn't have a crazy ordinance where if you go beyond half the value of the property, you have to go up to complete specs. I mean, I think what we have here, you would have to convince them what that look is going to be.
Mary's like, wait a minute.
Well, that's, that's how it is in Seabrook, if you go beyond a certain level, then you've got to bring it up to specs all around.
Before you guys get too far in the weeds.
You, you would have to.
You're back to Mary's ask and that is, this village, Martha, I'm saying deserve, deserved and wanted.
I like the word.
A, a town hall, because if we're leasing the property for a hundred years, whatever, it's still not ours.
Oh, I agree.
So.
But you're providing, you're providing what?
You were headed down a great path, what you said to her about going back to them and saying, hey, this is, this was our number and we just can't get around your number. But the other part of that is, if nothing else, you come back with, maybe they got ideas on how to get it down and then maybe rebidding, but. You know, they, they'll be the ones rebidding it.
Yeah, give us your best price or it may have to go back out to a rebid situation with.
I mean, as far, as far as.
Parameters.
You know, if a town deserves a town hall, I mean, if, and again, you know, if we did that, you know, if we did a lease. The town would still be getting a town hall, but it'd still be, you know, it would be a town hall, it wouldn't be. You know, whether, whether we own the property or we lease the property, it's still, town's got a town hall. But I mean, you know, I mean, but again, I'm.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm saying I'm in favor of that at this point.
I don't disagree with you, Nick, it's just a mystery and, and the same logic they followed. She has, Kim has a very strong feeling about how she builds projects, totally agree with it. Joe has an idea of how, he doesn't want to buy something with not knowing he can't pay for it a hundred percent. I personally have never had a good time wrapping my head around leasing something. I, just, my dad was, he was a Tennessee hill builder, he said, no, you own it, you, you work hard and you own it. And that's where I, that's what I want for the village, is they've worked hard, they've been here twenty years. It's rated as one of the highest for cabinet incomes, which is a number of categories that we're high up on. Yeah, we don't have a village hall and that, that bothers me. Now, at the end of the night, if everyone said, hey, Robert, even at one point, whatever the numbers were, three, I'm not going to do it. You guys don't have to convince me, huh? I'm basically with you all, right? We're all working for the village.
I mean, just, like I said, the numbers are just, I keep, I keep going back to Ron, but I mean, originally Ron, if you go way, you know, three years back, you know, you know.
If it's eight fifty.
Ron actually wanted to be more like, you know, six seventy-five, he was saying.
Yeah, but, and but that's.
And I kept saying, oh, but Margaret, we got something a little bit nicer than that.
Right, right. Well, and that's why I say like, okay, I'm here now, but I'm, it's not off council. I don't know how they came up with the numbers in the first place. And that's why, you know, and, and not that I disagree with you in the sense, but it's, I also though, you know, I, obviously in our house, we have a budget for things too. But I feel like you wouldn't buy, if you budgeted so much to buy a house, I wouldn't buy one that didn't have a kitchen. And I feel like in a sense, after a while, it's like we're talking about.
But that's what I, but that's what I said, and then Ron said, well, then we reduced it, we spread funded, you know, we got, you got to down to that price.
Yeah, like, we're going to spend on the roads to the village, that lead to the village, we're going to spend on the park that leads to the village. We're going to spend on all kinds of things that lead to the village, but where's the village? I don't know, and that's, it seems kind of silly after a while, that's all.
If y'all are okay with me going to the lowest responsive, I can see what we can do.
I think you guys should both do what you've talked about, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I'm actually good with that.
Yeah, we can do that.
We can chat tomorrow, I mean, we're obviously not going to make a complete decision tonight.
The second is whether or not council's okay with me talking to another engineer about what can be done with that site plan.
Sure.
We have legal parameters, we've got to stay within.
Is there a cost associated with that?
Maybe a couple hundred dollars or so.
I guess.
Christina's got money.
I don't for this year.
I agree.
Do we just pass the budget, does that mean that starts now?
Let's go ahead and talk about it, I'm assuming any engineer is going to charge me. If he's actually going to dive into it, he's going to charge me a hundred bucks an hour for a few hours, so I'm thinking it's a few hundred bucks. Which I don't have any authority to spend money, I take to her.
You have money in your capital project, I mean, you, you see you have eight sixty there, so we have money, it's just a matter of if y'all want to put a cap on it or not.
But he's not going to charge me just to say, hey, take a look at this. Here's what I think can be done, can it be done?
And he's probably.
He'll say yes or no.
He's probably not going to have a complete answer for you by next week, which is when the agenda packets go out.
But then when it comes to putting out specs of what we want, want done, that's going to cost.
Yeah.
That's going to be part of the bid that the.
But he'll be able to say, yeah, I can, you can work with this and we can.
Well, one of the big questions I'm going to ask him, Kim, is since half of it's already cleared. You know, wherever parking and dumping asphalt and all that, that's already cleared. Half of it's already cleared and all this is pervious and this is what's left, do we even have to pull a Dena permit? When you don't pull a Dena permit, you don't do stormwater.
It feels like that's a big expense.
Yeah, that's the biggest part of the site work is all that stormwater.
Yeah.
But just sort of a no. But just sort of a note, not doing stormwater is not doing anything wrong. All your houses are built without stormwater.
So here's the reality, he, we've got one week until the next agenda goes out. So you can talk to the engineer, get his general price of how much he would charge to sit down with us and go over it. We can bring it back to the board at the May thirtieth. By that time, I will have hopefully talked to the lowest responsive to see what, what he thinks we can get it down to. And then y'all can make a complete decision on May thirtieth.
What did you say the site work was again?
Eight, eight hundred-ish.
Okay, so no matter what it's gonna be a quality.
Can you, can you go talk to the plans?
Yeah, they're on our website.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
You just don't need to give me-
So it's-
Whatever they originally sent you is probably the same format this engineer would use. So they, I mean, it may not be a PDF, whatever he sent you. Are we done?
Yeah, we're, we're thirty minutes past our hard stop.
And I have to get some stuff done.
Well, that was a good conversation.
I have to get some of this done.
I understand, okay. So what I was gonna possibly do is get to that right away. Or, and/or is there a chance that we could recess and, and pick up another day before we, um, but is it imperative that this has to be done?
There's only two things I really would like to get done.
Well, we need to approve the consent.
Yeah, that, that's one of them, and that's the DOT thing.
Okay, so.
What about the budget amendment, sorry?
That's in the consent.
Okay, so, um, so I need a motion to-
Hold on.
Cause we're back, we're on administrative report right now.
I'm, I'm, uh, I'm-
Yeah.
What motion do you want, I'm ready.
Wait, 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 I'm just, I'm wondering what we wanna do first.
So let's table the reports and updates.
Can, can you just send them to us?
No, I don't have them.
Do you need them? Since we're in the agenda, do we need a motion to-
Table them.
Table to what?
Table to the work session.
Updates to the work session.
Yep.
Table all the reports.
All the reports, and, yep. And then I'd like to just go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Look at that, we're on to unfinished business number one.
The survey, you're gonna table that?
I mean, I'm, I'm good with approving the questions, I don't need to talk about the questions anymore.
I'm ready to move forward, but I had a couple of amendments before.
Well, here's the thing.
Well, Rose is up next, so unless you-
No, it's not.
We tabled it, Jesus. The only thing I need to get done-
Rose's policy, discuss Rose's acceptance.
We tabled that till we tabled it at number one.
Oh, we did?
Yeah. Okay, so let's, so let's go with what we know we can table. What do you, uh, what do we absolutely need?
The only thing I definitely need is new business number one, y'all can table everything else.
Okay, honestly, can I just say, the draft meeting minutes is like a second. I don't think any of us, including staff, are gonna disagree with that. It literally would take a second. So, all I'm gonna do is ask if we put draft meeting minutes online, that's all.
I make a motion with draft meeting minutes online.
Listen, that's, well, we have to, it's pretty vital.
We have to discuss it first.
But, so I'd like to just keep that on there, it's two seconds.
Okay, so new business, are we on new business number one, Jill?
Hold on, can I make-
I'm not sure where we are, because we're, we're out of unfinished business, is that correct?
No, stop.
So-
Hold on, I know, we're, we're under unfinished business number two, the survey. Can I just make a quick point? I know everybody wants to move forward with the survey, but the survey's not actually gonna go out until the fall, cause it can't go out in the summer, cause nobody's gonna be around, nobody's gonna answer it. So we do have a little bit of time to tweak it, so I think we're fine tabling it to the May thirtieth.
I don't want, I don't want it to go in the fall.
Let's, that's a different discussion.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna table it to May thirtieth, I'm fine with that.
We're tableing it to May thirtieth?
Yeah, to May thirtieth.
Motion to ta- so I don't have to make a motion, we just table it.
It does affect our contract with COG.
Can we take action on it?
And that's what I was concerned about, cause it was June is when the-
So if we did, if we didn't start the survey tomorrow or the next day, then the survey, according to the contract that we have right now with COG, it has to be completed by June thirtieth, and that's tabulation of results and everything, so basically our-
There's no way, so that's gonna be fine.
Yeah, but you see, now, now we're talking about a discussion, either we're keeping it on the agenda or we're not keeping it on the agenda.
No, we're not, no, we're tabling it.
If it were, so, but can we act on it on the thirtieth?
If we get to it.
On May thirtieth, I mean.
I mean, I hope so.
No, I'm just saying, cause you guys said you didn't wanna act on our work session.
Oh, can we act on it?
But see, but see, their contract is saying that everything-
No, I don't wanna discuss it, Joe, we're just saying.
Yes, we can act on it.
Okay, that's it.
Yes. I'm, I'm fine, is everybody fine making a decision and?
Yes, that's fine.
So table to five thirty. Okay, so now we're on new business. Consider allowing administrator to execute revisions on agreement ID number seven, seven, two, four.
Yeah, that's the one Christina needs to talk about.
So let's, let's talk about that now, we'll table the rest if we get there. So we're on that now, so instead of jumping ahead and tabling, we'll table it after.
Okay, we'll figure it out like this.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
So we're on to new business number one, consider allowing administrator executive revisions on agreement.
Execute.
Hold on, did we vote to table, cause like, I'm confused, did we, first, did we vote on the consent agenda?
Yes, yes.
Okay, did we vote to table the survey questions?
Do we have to vote?
I think you do.
You probably should, to table, to follow the consensus.
I make a motion to table the survey.
That's what I asked.
Just to be sure.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. And that was also, did we vote to do the, to discuss the roads acceptance?
Yeah, earlier, while you're finishing the agenda.
That was in the adoption meeting agenda.
Okay, I bet. Next up, consider, new business, consider allowing administrator execute revisions on agreement ID seven, seven, two, four, NCDOT, to reflect changes in project math, match funds as necessary for professional engineering right of way and construction categories contingent upon additional funding award.
Okay. So I'm gonna try to break this down very simple, I'm not sure if y'all had a chance to read the memo about, it's provided in your agenda packet. Basically, long story short, um, the proposed funding table that we had initiated in our agreement with DOT for the roundabout down here at Marvin and Newtown, did not include any funds for professional engineering. They have proposed a, or they have done a cost estimate and we have a six hundred thousand dollar, one point two million dollar overrun, which we would be on the, on the hook for six hundred thousand of that. So DOT is gonna be requesting additional funds for this, from the CRTPO for this project. So hopefully we won't actually have any impact to us. If that, if they get the award, they have to move around the funding matches, because the DA funds basically will not fund a project if there's not matches in every phase. So they're basically breaking the project up into different phases. At the end of the day, there's no net increase in funds from us. It's merely just moving from one line item to another line item to phase in the project differently.
Hold on, but it says earlier that we're on the hook for six hundred thousand.
We are, if they can't find the funding.
Okay.
But she's suggesting we allow her to execute revisions contingent upon additional funding award.
Right, which is fine, I'm fine with that, but, but there is a chance that we could be on the hook for six hundred thousand dollars.
There is, if they don't get funding from this DA distribution, what they would do is find other sources. CRTPO apparently has some additional funding that's coming out in the fall, that they would tap into, to that bucket. If that doesn't work, then we would just kinda do a pride to our representation from the state and see if they could do some type of appropriation to help us.
But if they couldn't?
If they couldn't, worst case scenario, yes.
Worst case scenario, we're on the hook for six hundred thousand.
In addition to the two fifty that we already paid.
But, I did ask Sean Eperson today, because he gave me the illusion that they wouldn't, they potentially may not even fund it if, with, they couldn't get the funding. Because they don't, they don't have, they don't have anywhere to pull the six hundred thousand from themselves. So if we don't get this funding, the chances are DOT may say it's just a no-go.
So-
But they did not give me the illusion that they thought this was gonna be something they couldn't get their hands on.
But, all you need right now is the authority.
To amend the contract, if we get it.
All right.
And basically what I would be doing is amending this table as you see here with the proposed amounts, so that it shows a change of line item, line item, all right, transfers.
So we just need a motion.
Yeah, make, okay, we're good? Any questions? I don't wanna make a motion if we got questions.
I just don't wanna be on the hook for six hundred thousand dollars.
About this later?
Yeah.
Clarification on six hundred, that's a prior contractual provision, so that's already there. It's unlikely it's gonna get collected, but regardless of this motion, the six hundred thousand is already there. So you aren't, you aren't modifying it to make you the father of Chris.
Yes, that's correct.
Say that again, make sure.
He, he's saying, he's, he's not, he's, he's saying that we're not saying right now, we're gonna give six hundred thousand dollars more. We're just moving money around.
And what we're saying is that we're not changing the contract in the sense that we were still on the hook for-
Right.
Fifty percent of the overrun, even though we put two twenty on it. Now, all of a sudden, there, a one point two million dollar overrun and we're on the hook for six hundred thousand dollars.
I do wanna point out, though, that if you look at the detail sheet that I provided to you about the one point two overrun, it actually details what it's for. A lot of it's in contingency, so the DOT does not think it's really gonna be one point two. So I don't want people that are listening to fret and think that we're not gonna get the roundabout. I think DOT has just given us, worst case, absolute scenario, this is what we're looking at. But they were very assured that we would be okay, so just letting y'all know, I don't think we should worry. Yes, I don't think we should worry yet.
But we should show up at the CRTPO meeting.
Yes.
To be, to vote.
So-
And that would be one of us.
Yes.
I apologize in advance.
Yeah, I know.
Cause-
I mean, we can't send, as much as I'd like to send. I know, I know, I, they can't, you can't go to that meeting, but I, I need to know when that next meeting is.
So we're all clear, all she needs right now-
I haven't, I haven't read the contract, but-
All she needs right now is that one motion.
Right, and I just wanna be sure that I, I understood. I, I said, we didn't have, I didn't read through it. But just because we make a motion that says that the contract is only revised if they get the funding, does that hold water legally?
No, the, the motion is actually a little bit different than that. What we're saying is, we already have an existing contract where we're responsible for cost overruns. And right now, we are on the hook for six hundred thousand. In the unlikely event that all this falls through, the purpose of this amendment is to modify the, um, money within the current contract that we're spending to get engineering and making it eligible for a pot of money.
Yes, so it's like breaking it down differently.
So it's breaking it down, so we are not, this motion has nothing to do with adding liability.
Okay.
All this to do with shifting calls to engineering-
And they're moving it around.
Okay.
To make this eligible for funding.
Okay.
So we don't have to spend six hundred thousand.
I, I see why.
You said it much better than I did.
By the original contract, we were-
Now I understand.
I did too, I, I, I-
Worst case scenario, and without funding.
As long as we all get it, we're all good.
All right, ready?
Okay, all right.
Questions?
I'll make some.
No, go ahead, make some.
Okay, make a motion to allow administrator to execute revisions on agreement ID number one, uh, seven, seven, two, four, with NCDOT to reflect changes in project match funds as necessary in professional engineering right of way and construction categories contingent upon additional funding award.
Further discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so next up, um, we're looking at, the next one, do we wanna?
Curbing gutter survey?
So, I mean, unless y'all are ready to pull the trigger on those, I, y'all can table them. If y'all have a lot of discussion about, I mean, I put it in the capital project closeout. If y'all wanna actually have discussion about it, we can table it, or if y'all ready to go.
So maybe we, an in-off, open meeting straw hole? We can find out, is everyone, anyone ready to make a motion, one way or the other?
No.
No.
No?
I thought we were gonna table everything, except you wanted to talk about draft meetings.
Yeah, and talk is a loose term, cause it's not really, I'm gonna just throw a motion out there.
Hold on, hold on, so I'm gonna make a motion to table new business number two, three, and four.
What's two, three, and four?
And five.
No, cause we already tabled that one. We tabled that at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, I got agenda format, two tables.
Yeah, I took that out.
I don't have my new, uh, thing, that's all. And then six?
Next meeting.
Until May thirtieth.
Okay, so that's table two.
Okay. Oh, the closeout ordinance, do you need that one too? You don't? Okay.
All right, further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, next up, we had consider availability of draft meeting minutes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna assume you guys read the report, and I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we, um, request that, well, you know what, I wrote it, so let me make sure.
Hold on, I know I had it, I just got it, where did I put it? Did I put it in the wrong spot?
Should be in the new version, it's the last one.
No, I know, but I just, I just stuck it in there, oh, I stuck it in the wrong spot.
Okay, then, we're gonna, uh, you know, and, and stop once we be sure that everyone's on, on board. That, uh, so the quick overview has been, yes, there are people who do rely on the meeting minutes. They had been calling in and around the fall, asking if we would at least put the draft meeting minutes on at that point. Everyone was a little reluctant, cause, you know, not everything was in the good shape. But now, staff feels it might be a good idea, in agreement with what I believe, is to at least put the draft meeting minutes online, so that the public has at least something to look at. And, um, so my motion is going to be, and we can discuss it after if you really need to, but motion to have village staff watermark or prominently mark all council and advisory board draft meeting minutes with the term draft. Once draft minutes are in reasonably good shape, which is something that staff wanted to be sure was the case. So once they're in reasonably good shape, post the draft meeting minutes online until they can be replaced by adopted meeting minutes. And that is my motion.
Starting when?
Starting like, as soon as staff can get to it.
But I mean, like what date? Not like, like next week, but like what set of meeting, like what set of minutes? Like, should, I-
Any that they can, I, whatever, whatever-
Including the ones in, in the consent?
Well, sure.
Yeah, we do that for them.
Cause we've got them in draft form, we might as well let people read them.
Yeah, but they are like crazy. Like, I would rather, if you want, if-
Start fresh.
If you wanna do this, I'm not saying, I mean, I, I think it's fine. But I think we need to be like fresh, like at least, like start in March, like where we've, like, we're gonna approve all this stuff May thirtieth. Fingers crossed, and then we can start in March.
Okay, how about this, January first? Cause you guys started make, doing the minutes in January first, right? Those are all things you drafted.
I would tell them.
But they're also in the consent.
March two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Cause that'll get us, like, that'll get us all cleaned up for here.
I know which ones she's talking about.
Fresh, like-
Like, 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 like start May thirtieth, I'm fine with that too.
That's, that's where I was thinking too, when you said fresh, let's, it's like, it's a whole new process, and let's get through this.
But I wanted to follow up with questions to them, but if you need me to wait, I will. Are you all, what, what would you all do? You're the ones responsible for it.
I'm, I'm not ready to put draft minutes up there right now.
So next?
So next.
For any, for any meeting.
Would you be okay in like, May 30th meeting, or?
I hope so, but I'm, I'm still trying to get called up from all the other meetings that you all have had.
Let me ask you about the concept itself. Do you like the idea of, to go into draft once you're caught up? Like, in June or July?
I don't have any problem with putting draft minutes up there. Your minutes, you tell me what you want to do with your minutes.
Yes, okay.
Well, the only, the only question I would have then is.
Well, if you change it, it's my dog.
They're going to put draft meeting minutes up on their own, and we're not going to see them beforehand, and so, well, that's not right.
Because they're draft minutes, right?
Well, I know, but I mean, when you put something up there that's not right, then you change it, the public seeing something that, right?
Yeah, that's a good point. I hadn't think of that.
I mean, that, that's my only concern. Legally, if somebody gets a change and they, they shouldn't rely on it, but it'll be claimed. Really, y'all got to figure out your minutes.
Yeah, no kidding.
I mean, I've never seen anything like this. You shouldn't, you should be adopting them at the next meeting and approving them. You know, one, they're probably too long, uh, there, there's some other things in them and you aren't agreeing on it, and I know it's not going to be fixed quickly, but when you can do that, then it's in the agenda packet for the next meeting, and everybody sees them, and that is the way most local governments are functioning. I know we're not there yet, but that protects you from the draft. But with this, when people aren't having minutes for six months or a year, that's bad too. That's real bad. Uh, I mean, my idea would be, figure out a way you're going to approve minutes and get them done at the next meeting every time. If we think that's going to take six months for y'all to do, I don't like this, um, but if I'm the public, I think it is a, a problem when they can't see minutes for a year or six months.
I think, I think a part of our problem too is always been that we, you know, we talked about having, like, executive summary, just whatever the minutes were going to be, just a quick, you know, we weren't going to get into every single word that was said, every single objection everybody had.
Because you have the verbal to go to, if they really want to know the details.
They could go listen to the tape if they want to hear what, you know, more of it, but I mean, so I think, you know, we've gotten to make the minutes, so, you know, we put so much stuff into the minutes now, it's no longer, you know.
With all due respect, that's coming for people that don't read them, and so.
I do, I agree though, I agree with that, I agree though.
I'm saying, the rest of you, I rely on minutes all the time, and I have as a planning board chair. It was my only way of knowing what the council was doing if I couldn't make a meeting. So, having just enough, I'm not saying executive's bad, but you have to have just enough in there that you know what it is that transpired. On the other hand, there's the other end of the spectrum where there was too much. Like, when we have them done by the transcriber, right? I mean, even I was like, that's way too much. It wasn't substantive. But that's what, I didn't really want to talk about that. I just feel that I agreed right up until, for a while, in, in September to December, to just, okay, let's get caught up. Now that that hasn't happened, and we, and it sounds like the staff has put meeting, draft meeting minutes out since January that looked decent. You gave them to us thinking they were decent. I figured at least it's something that the council, that the public can look at. I'm going to leave it all with you. I thought it might be an easy decision, but it, it doesn't sound like it will be.
I, I mean, I get what you're saying, and I think that makes sense. We just, we have to, we just have, we have to start through the minutes earlier. If, if we have to, we'll do a special meeting and we will approve every single set of minutes and get them done if we have to, but, I mean, yeah, they should be online. I agree with that, but we need to be doing them in a timely fashion.
To Nick's point, he was saying that we were talking about high-level summary. And for to solve your issue with really understanding what happened in there, that's where the timestamp comes in. When we're talking about that issue, they can quickly go to the, the verbal on the timestamp and say, okay, I want to know more about, was it really just this, or what was actually said? Then they can go to that point, because I thought that's what we initiated, was the timestamp, which I started seeing on some of the minutes and stuff.
That's the thing, and I don't, that's why I don't want to, I don't want to call out it, like, what we have and haven't done, but some of them are, some of them are.
Yeah, and, and, and we got to get there, but there's, there's got to be, to his point, a process, and that, that process has to be agreed upon, but we are coming up on one year of minutes not being done. We're going 531.
Remember, I was in here before that.
Right, right, but, but, you know, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, and, and I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, someone, the impression that we're sending, I was sending draft minutes out that haven't really been vetted or reviewed and stuff, and it could be way off, and it's like, wait a minute, and it doesn't look good, or just say, look, the next meeting, we should be at a point where we should, that, that, when we're all caught up, but at the end of the day, when, once this is all done, there should be time from the one meeting to the next meeting to approve it between the regular meeting.
And it's the best way to do it because it's hard for you to approve minutes from last year.
Yeah, it's the freshest year.
Uh, if you're looking at it, you get it in your agenda packet from a week ago, you should be able to remember, and there really should be that much discussion, and you just boom, 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 but you're not there, and.
Right.
I think one year is way too long, uh, and if you have to do something.
But, but if staff can get on it, to the point about having it at the next meeting, if staff, once we get caught up and if staff gets on it, then we're getting that minute, minutes maybe a week after the meeting, and by the time that they, the.
Nope.
No, 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 I mean, when you're, if you're all caught up, and we just had a meeting like we did today, in a week's time, I assume we could have a draft or something for us to review and say, okay, here, can you add this? Or, and we can all get back to you on what our changes would want to be. By that time, okay, so that it comes back to us and we're, we're sitting there going, okay, this is good, and then by the time it gets to the meeting, it's in the consent agenda, or we're just approving it.
That's ideally how it works, but can I tell you something else? Having done it for two and a half years with a board that is lengthy, doing minutes for a board that takes, whose meetings are as long as ours is almost never done in a week. It's almost impossible.
This is not the only board I do minutes. I have two other boards, so I do.
But if it's high level, though, that helps.
Well.
Still got to listen to the whole thing.
In my minute primer, they indicate that your motions are the most important part of your minutes and should only be what should be part of your minutes. Anything else, you, you have the recording so they can go and listen to that recording. Now, what I can do, um, since, since I've been here twice, I have not, no one has told me to do the timestamp. Matter of fact, I really didn't even know the timestamp even existed until it was brought to me by a former council member, because it was being done, and then all of a sudden it was stopped being done. So I, you know, at this point, it's in the, in your policy for timestamp, but no one has actually given me the direction to continue to do timestamp. Um, I can do timestamp, and then I can do your, your motions, and that will speed my process quite a bit, and I won't have to spend all my days doing that.
Right, right.
So, so do you need us to make a motion to add the timestamp? Because I'm happy to do that.
What she just said about just putting the motions in there, I mean, are we all?
Because your motions have got to be.
Mary's not, but I'm fine with that.
But that's, but that's your, that's your minutes. It's not supposed to be a, a story.
Like you said, the high level was made on text wise.
High level doesn't mean your motion. I've been to 200 different websites since October in towns and villages, and I've had to download their meeting minutes, I can tell you, and there's always some review of the highlight of what's happened. I don't even care if it's bullet point. I mean, we can talk about that over rules of procedure, but to just do the motion and not know how you got to that process?
Come on, why'd you have to do that?
I don't know. It's so weird, because I took, I took direction as a clerk, and I was always told, and you were there, Nick, I was always told, Mary, you need to make sure that the minutes say, give someone who was not there a reasonable idea of what occurred and what transpired, and why those decisions were made. And, and so, now we, and I don't mind being somewhere in the middle, but we've gone from here to, we'll just throw a timestamp on there. I don't think that that's true particularly transparent. It puts a lot of the onus on the public to go and look for the information they, they need, as opposed to, they can go, download it, read it, and get a pretty decent idea of what's happening. I think that that's our responsibility, but, yes. Okay, well, can we?
Well, we're going to be talking about minutes until 5:30 to get those done.
That's why I was just trying to.
At the end of the day, the drafting, is there going to be a motion on the table? We'll see where it goes. To, to have the draft, because that's what you want, right?
That's, I thought, yeah, I thought it was going to be easy, sorry, I just thought it would be. Uh, you can hang them with dry if you really want me to, but that's what I.
Over, just vote for now and see if it's.
It's up to you, Mary, but the, um, I hear what the attorney said about the draft, and I wonder, how quickly do we put the recordings on?
I usually, um, I usually try to do that after the meeting. Um, what, the, the difficulty in that is it takes so much bandwidth. So then, when, when I do that, I make a movie and then I make a video, and so by that time, the phones don't work when, when I am on the internet because it uses so much bandwidth.
It's usually the next day or the day after.
Yeah, so it's usually the next day or the day after.
It's not very long, it's a day or so.
Yeah, she's quick at putting them on, but that process?
Yeah, it's, it's a brutal process, and it's time-consuming.
Upgrade this, the website and stuff, maybe?
Well, I'm hoping, and, and I was on the phone with VC3 on Monday to figure out a, a workaround because when you are on YouTube, and if you've put in a video, it sees, sometimes it sees it as a duplicate video and won't give you a, a link.
Can I ask a question? We had two different services, either both Dropbox, and then even better, was called Spider Oak, which is essentially a Dropbox that people can't change. Is, as quickly as you upload to your computer, you get a link and you post that link online, there is no YouTube. Like, I don't even understand why we even did that because that's a totally overkill for, for audio.
Can you do it the same way with SharePoint? Can you do the same thing with SharePoint?
Yes, you can. And so this is why I don't feel like we're maximizing some of the tools we have, but yes, Barbie.
Well, and see, that, that's where I, I had the disconnect with SharePoint, so.
Oh, yeah. So, and I know what, the last time we did this, I was like, oh, I knew how to correct it. I knew you guys were moving quickly, but I'll share that with you. I honestly believe uploading these audios to SharePoint and then sending that link is going to be way easier than YouTube, just so you know. Might take away some of your time and your frustration, because YouTube is frustrating.
Yeah.
Well, and where I was headed with that, and why I asked Barbie was simply, if someone's chomping at the bit to know what happened at the meeting, I, I think there's nothing wrong with just directing them to the, the website.
Audio.
They, they, they just don't want to sit through the six, that, four, or five hours and stuff.
Sure.
I get that, that's why the minutes at the high level, but if you really want to dig in.
With the timestamp.
The timestamp, they direct them to that, and that subject is whatever it is.
And maybe the timestamps just half the motions, you know, it's not like you.
And they can back it up and do whatever, what was discussed before the motion.
Somewhere, there's, someone said happy medium. Somewhere there's a.
Happy medium.
Happy medium.
But I mean, this is terrible with it. These are open meetings, and people without interest, they should come to the meeting.
We said it, we said it.
You want everyone happy at the meeting, you know?
You're invited. She said, I was at the administrative, we had Justin, who was like, why do we need minutes at all?
Are we going to have a motion in?
I believe you have a motion on the table.
She didn't make a motion.
So there's no motion on the table?
No, there is a motion.
No, there is a motion on the table.
Alright.
What mo, what motion?
You want me to read it?
Opera draft.
To do the draft.
No, you made it, that's fine.
Okay.
Consider availability of draft meeting minutes, so further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
I need a vote.